It is one o'clock and one o'clock is when we convene. And I would like you all to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We usually have a moment of silence to start off and today we have a lot of things to think about. We not only have the concerns about our servicemen who are serving in Afghanistan and Iraq, we have the unfortunate people in Japan, but we also have this new element of what's going on in Libya and I only can hope that that would be resolved quickly. So please join me in a moment of silence as we think about those things. Thank you very much. This is, we have convening now the March 23 meeting of the Barnstable County Commissioners. Welcome. And let's see, we have 1:05, which is almost here. Does anybody have any comment before we invite Lisa McNeil to come forward? Okay, Lisa, why don't you move your, I guess move your chair forward.
Should I move my chair forward? And maybe also Katie Mueller to come with me? And Mary is actually a board member with us.
Really?
Yes. So we'll talk a little bit.
Be Mary, you're staying home.
No.
No, you can use that chair. Yeah, that's perfect.
Excuse me.
Is this public comments now?
No. Public comment on the agenda would be later.
You hear from public comment on the wind turbine?
Yes.
Regulations, then we'll reserve that for later.
That would be at two o'clock. If you have any other public comment, I'd be happy to hear that now.
That isn't related to the wind turbine discussion?
Okay.
Wind turbine is scheduled at two o'clock. We will have public comment relating to that and we're allowing an hour for public comment at that time.
Thank you very much for explaining.
Did you have any other? Okay. Lisa, welcome.
Thank you very much. I think I know.
But for the folks out there in video land.
Lisa McNeil, President of the newly formed Cape Cod Volunteers. And I was with the Cape Cod Foundation for many years and I'm here to talk to you today about Cape Cod Volunteers. And Katie Mueller, our network coordinator, is with me as well. And Mary Leclerc is our board member.
So we have two ex-county people on this.
Yeah, and Mary actually started with us as a county representative and of course we enjoyed having her on our advisory committee so much that we asked her to be on our board. So I'm really here to talk to you about Cape Cod Volunteers and what we're doing and how we have worked with the county in the past and I hope we can continue to do that. I'd like to give you just a little bit of history about Cape Cod Volunteers. We started in 2006 with a grant from the Atlantic Philanthropies to assess civic engagement of older adults. And 2006 seems like a long time ago and if you're like me, I thought way back then, why do we need to assess this? We know that everybody's involved. But we did, the Cape Cod Foundation applied for that grant and we were awarded it along with 29 other community foundations from around the country looking at civic engagement of older adults. And the Atlantic Philanthropies really wanted to do this to shift the paradigm shift from looking at older adults as drains on our resources. If you remember that time, we were talking a lot about social security and Medicare and how, you know, the baby boomers were really, and older adults were draining our systems, to looking at older adults as a real resource to our communities. And so as we started assessing what was going on on Cape Cod, not surprising, we found that older adults were motivated to become civically engaged. They wanted to learn new things, they wanted to give back to the community, and they wanted to remain socially engaged with their community and the people in it. We also found, not surprisingly, that there were a lot of civic engagement opportunities on Cape Cod. And civic engagement at that time, we were defining as volunteerism, lifelong learning, and paid service work. And we found that the Community College and some other community schools were doing a great job in lifelong learning. There were several employment programs, including Elder Services and Workforce Investment Board that targeted older adults. But the piece that was really missing, and we kept coming back to this with the people that we talked with, was the connection between the older adults and the opportunities. A lot of people got engaged, but we found it might not be a good opportunity, they might not be really interested in it. And we also found that when it wasn't a good opportunity, chances were people would stop volunteering altogether. And what they said was, we just want someone to talk with about how to get involved and what we're interested in. So over these four years, we've really been doing a lot of planning and research around how we could put together a good model. You might remember that there have been several attempts. We had two community-wide forums in fall 2007 and spring 2009. And actually AmeriCorps, RDO AmeriCorps was a part of that panel discussion in 2009. Also in 2009, Beth Albert from the Department of Human Services and Darlene Johnson-Morris understood the value of a Cape-wide volunteer network. And the county actually included Cape Cod Foundation, Cape Cod Volunteers as part of its VISTA application. And through that process, we got Katie Mueller working with us. And it was a very fast process. I have to say hats off to RDO AmeriCorps. Darlene and Greg Powell were tremendous in making it an easy process and helping us go through that. And Katie was hired in July and started in August in kind of a whirlwind. But really, through our planning, we had three goals that we wanted to take care of. One was to enhance the coordination of civic opportunities so that people could connect more easily. Two, we wanted to expand access to civic opportunities by strengthening the infrastructure of local government and nonprofit organizations to effectively use volunteers. And three, we wanted to raise the awareness of older adults and all Cape Codders, all Cape Codders, as resources to our community. So based on our findings, we developed four main components of our work. One was a website. The second is what we're calling Opportunity Centers, local regional offices, and we'll talk more about that. A third is training and technical assistance for municipalities and nonprofit organizations. And the fourth component is really just promotion of volunteerism. And when we hired Katie, we really wanted her to focus on the website. And I know that you've received a report from Katie in the past, but I thought it might be nice for you also to hear from Katie about her experience and the opportunity that the county afforded her with Cape Cod Volunteers. So Katie?
Well, I feel very fortunate to have been able to serve as a Barnstable County AmeriCorps VISTA last year. As part of the AmeriCorps Cape Cod, I had several training opportunities that I might not have otherwise had, such as in grant writing and first aid. I also had the opportunity to collaborate with AmeriCorps Cape Cod members to participate and help coordinate community-wide service events. I also learned about the possibilities of a career in service and grad school opportunities for pursuing a career in social policy and management. And I also learned about volunteer coordination and recruitment and about the benefits of engaging older adults in service, which is particularly helpful considering, I think it's about 26% of our population on the Cape is older than 55.
Maybe 65.
65, is it? Okay. Still of particular interest to us. Needless to say, my year of service for Barnstable County gave me many opportunities for personal growth and professional development and ended with putting me in a job working for a nonprofit that I love. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
We just hope that chainsaw came in handy.
Katie, did you do the chainsaw training? I don't know, she hasn't.
No, no. Yeah, unfortunately.
But we were really lucky. I mean, it's funny because Greg and Darlene always say, oh, you know, the Vistas were so great last year and you really lucked out. But I don't know, I've met a lot of the AmeriCorps Volunteers as well and they all seem to be dedicated, hardworking, and really smart people. So, I mean, I feel like we did luck out with Katie and obviously we hired her to stay on with us. So I want to thank you for making that opportunity available to Katie and to our work. So we also wanted to just give you a little update on kind of where we are right now. Katie really took hold of the website and started basically with nothing, researching the products, software products that were out there, and really has taken it to a website that is not perfect because of the software that we're using. But it's so good that we get calls from around the country saying, how did you make that software system do what it's doing? And how did you make it look like that? So she's really done a great job. We have 115 or 120 organizations listed on the website, over 190 opportunities, volunteer opportunities. We also have about 180 people who have gone on and you don't have to sign up and have a profile to search the website, but about 180 people have actually made their own profiles and to track their own volunteer interests and time and all of that. So it's really being used. There are referrals made through the website. Katie is also taking calls from people who don't want to use the website. So the website is going strong. The next thing on our list, and we just got word from Harwich, will be opening an Opportunity Center in Harwich Community Center. The Opportunity Centers are places where people can go and talk with trained volunteers about what their interests are and explore the possibilities. I mean, that's what we heard over and over again. I don't want to get on a website, I don't want to call, I want to talk with someone. We did the website so that anybody could have access, but these Opportunity Centers are for people who really want to think more about what they want to do. So we'll be starting that soon. The Week of Volunteer Week, that's April 10 through the 16th, will be holding volunteer sort of forums and fairs around the Cape, including Harwich Community Center, Dennis Public Library, I'm looking at Katie because she's reserved all the spaces, Thelmath Public Library, and Wellfleet Public Library. So there'll be more information coming on that. The other piece that we're doing is training and technical assistance for nonprofits. We really thought when we started, we would hear from nonprofits, recruit for us and then get out of the way. But what we're hearing is, we know during these times, volunteers are really important and we know we have to improve and strengthen our volunteer programs. April 5th, we're kicking off our training program with a great training appealing to experience involving baby boomers in volunteering. And we're co-sponsoring that with Mass Service Alliance. And then we'll also be holding trainings throughout the year for nonprofits and municipalities. We've been getting more interest from municipalities about how to get more volunteers involved. And then finally, promotion of volunteerism through articles, thank you Commissioner Doherty for having us on County Chatter, radio programs, magazine articles, and in the next couple of months, we'll actually be stepping up our promotion of volunteerism.
Can we stop you there and say W O M I is looking for content, so you might want to hook up with them.
We will definitely do that.
You'll have to see whether or not you could have your own program on that.
Great. Thank you very much. So really, we wanted to come here to thank you for your past help. I know we've been talking to RDO AmeriCorps and they've indicated that they would include us in a Commonwealth Corps proposal. We wanted to bring you up to date on what we were doing because we think there's a lot of opportunity for partnership with the county. And then like everyone else, we're looking for funding. We know times are hard, but if you hear of anything, we appreciate it greatly if you could just let us know. And then we'd love to take any comments or questions from you that you might have.
Yep, I do, and I just, hi Lisa, how are you? I do want to just say to Katie that I remember you giving your presentation before the Human Service Advisory Board on the volunteer program and you look like such more of a sophisticated, professional woman out of your AmeriCorps polo shirt. So I can see that you've graduated and you're in the working world now, so I'm happy to see that. But, and I'm happy that all worked out. Our luck in many ways. So I do also want to say that I think that asking people and having them zero in on that conversation and sort of really, you know, tease out what it is that is interest because I remember even in my own mother's and her friends' experiences, if they went to do this, eh, you know, it's okay, but it's just not really the right match. And if they try to do something else and it doesn't work, and it really isn't the lack of willingness or the lack of need, it really, as you say, matching up those two things. So I think that this is a very good paradigm shift and, you know, I just hope that there's much more success, even though we do think everybody is involved. But we tend to see the same people all the time when we think everybody's involved. So that's great. So I think you're doing great. I heard you on the D Todd, talking all about this the other couple of weeks ago and I was very happy to hear all of it. Congratulations, it's moving along very well, I think. So we will help in any way we can, I'm sure.
Well, I think too, as the word spreads, in terms of what you're attempting to accomplish is really valuable and not just for the nonprofits because heaven knows they need as many volunteers as they can get, but for the municipalities as well. Because I don't think a lot of communities, municipalities, towns, I mean, would really be able to accomplish much if it weren't for their volunteers. I mean, all of the people who serve on boards and committees, I mean, all of that work that gets done by volunteers is huge. And I think sometimes those who might want to volunteer would be more inclined to do so if they had an opportunity to really train and learn about whatever it is that their, where their interest lies. So I think that program is so important because sometimes it is a mismatch and it's through no fault of anyone else, it's just someone believing that maybe that's the best place or the best committee or board in which they could serve and it turns out that it isn't really at all. So I really support your training program because it will move the process along and it will make people feel a lot better about what they're volunteering for, I think. So great, good job, both of you.
Well, I'm looking forward to having you come back and give an update, you know, on County Chatter, but I will say that my own experience with, you know, with attempting to volunteer has always run into the issue of you don't really know how to connect with the people that do the appointing. And I probably would still be a cemetery commissioner if they would have reappointed me, you know, after the election was over. So, you know, having said that, if somebody had said, well, this is what you're supposed to do to approach an appointing board to understand what the requirements are within a municipality. And by the way, there are many boards in Harwich that are looking for membership and they, and they run through the whole range of folks. While we have a large population of people who have, as we see at available time, we also have the, you know, the element that we found out when we were looking at the Workforce Board for the 55-plus was, were you involved with that?
A little bit, yeah.
Remember that the problem was that many of the people that we were trying to recruit in that age group had the expectation that they were being recruited to manage rather than participate. And I think that one of the things that a volunteer program could do is to demonstrate and explain that the need is for more spear carriers than, you know, than people that are directing, you know, directing large armies of things. And in many cases, the people that you're approaching have had a lot of wonderful, you know, life and work experience that could be, you know, that could be useful when it's applied. But somehow or other, we have to, you know, match up, you know, that experience with the reality of what, you know, what's available because we have a lot of places where, you know, where we're missing out. So I think that that, reaching out to the municipalities, especially in these times, could be, you know, very, very important. And don't, you know, don't overlook the schools. When, you know, when I spend time in the schools, I see a lot of need for volunteer tutors and, you know, and people to, let's say, to, you know, to help on a one-on-one basis and, you know, given that the schools will, you know, do the queries and, you know, vet them out, it is important that, you know, there'd be some way that they learn something about the protocols and something about how to, you know, how to approach a school system without being intimidated. So you're doing God's work and I'm very happy that, you know, that you've had this momentum build up and let me know when you want to give that update and we'll schedule your own.
Pretty soon. I was asked to give the website and the website is www.capecodvolunteers.org, all spelled out. And I'm not sure I said this, but our mission is really to link people with meaningful opportunities to serve. And we kind of underscore the meaningful and meaningful is different in getting back to what you were saying, meaningful is different from for every person. In some cases, it is stuffing envelopes and that's meaningful as somebody wants to get. And in other cases, it's taking charge of something and really using their experience to do something. We talked to CPAs who say, I want to be a treasurer because that's what I do. And then we talked to CPAs who say, I never want to use numbers again because I've done it my whole life. So it's really about what's meaningful for the person and then matching that, as you said, with the organization and what they need. So thank you again, I really appreciate it.
Does anybody else have any remarks?
No, actually, I do want to say thank you for your kind words about the AmeriCorps program. I think that's been a terrific program, very successful. And I think, you know, one of the side benefits maybe, Pat and I were just talking about this because the census figures came out, is maybe it helps attract at least a small number of young people to Cape Cod for public service. And you're a perfect example of that, exactly. So we have a lot of people who kind of stay on, try to get jobs here and continue to do good work at Cape Cod.
I just, you mentioned that you're having a volunteer training day on April 5th?
Yes.
And I just ask, where are they and what time during the day?
Actually, you know, we have packets. If you want to take this packet, and there's a flyer in there, is that right?
For the people.
So the training is on April 5th in the morning, 9 to 12, I think it is. And it's at the Cape and Islands Realtors Association in West.
Mid-Cape.
Mid-Cape, Mid-Tech Drive.
Mid-Tech Drive, and I think that's exit.
It's exit 7.
Exit 7, then vegan scroll roll going down the back.
Yep, that's right. So people do have to reserve for that and they can get more information from capecodvolunteers.org. There are also volunteer opportunities during the week of April 10 through 16th, that's National Volunteer Week. And we'll put out more information on that.
And how will that information go out? Do you have PSA's or?
PSA's, press releases, and on our website. And we'd be happy to send that directly to you.
If you send the emails, yeah, then we can forward that on to other people that we know that might have interest in other groups that we're aware of and that sort of thing. And, you know, it helps the retention of volunteers and those centers to know how to best utilize people. So I think that it's a great thing all around.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
So can we take like five-minute recess?
Yeah, I think we'll have to because we've got.
Well, then we'll do some work and then two o'clock we'll pick up. I'll get the piece of paper for the sign-in and then.
Yes. So we're going to go to recess.
For a few minutes.
Oh no, go ahead.
Better eat a sandwich to be on your.
It's harder.
I see him. We don't want to pass it out.
Welcome back. We know we're back in session and at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the summary of items. Does anybody have any comments on this?
I'll move to summary. Item number one.
That's not the summary I received.
That's a revise.
Jill, do you have anything on that?
Not at this, not at this time. No, I have no problem.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the summary of items?
I just made.
Is it a second?
Second.
Okay, no further discussion, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and opposed, any extensions, it is a vote. Thank you. Okay, do we have any comments from the, what we'd heard from Lisa McNeil? Any further comments? Okay, there's also the approval of the minutes of March 16th, which is a separate agenda item.
I'll move to approve the minutes of March 16th.
Okay, is there any discussion, any amendments? Hearing done, all is in favor?
Aye.
Reposed, any extensions, it is a vote. We have to ratify the actions of Joan Nelson. Was that also in the summary of actions?
Yeah, it's all in there. Actually, those are, the votes are separate. Remember, we decided to do those different when we changed our, changed our format for the open meeting.
Do we have a proclamation that we're going to execute?
I believe that's in there as well.
Yeah, we did, we blew that in the summary of actions. And we are, are there any, any personnel actions that we have delegated for you to take care of?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay. And let's see, this might be a time, since we do have some time, do we have any reports from any of you about the functions events of note in the last week or so?
Yes. As we all know, the three of us happened to attend the Children's Cove Legislative Luncheon last Friday. That was put on by Children's Cove. It had District Attorney Michael O'Keefe there, plus all of our Cape Cod delegation from legislation, from our legislators. And it's really an information gathering for Cove to have, have all of us on their premises and see how they work through these issues. And the issues that they deal with is that of sexual child abuse. And for all those of you who don't know, the county heavily supports financially and with our spirit, the work of Children's Cove. It was actually created under the auspices of Senator Rob O'Leary and Mary Leclerc, who was here earlier, because they saw a need for a safe place for children to go and to discuss these issues and not in the lobby of a courthouse. So they do tremendous work. Unfortunately, their clientele does have a large population and it needs more support than what we can provide, although we provide a lot. And that is the main reason for the Legislative Luncheon, to ask for their support from the state and federal governments. And I guess at this point, I'd ask, you know, so people to be aware of it and it's, all the support of the community is needed as well. And it was very good and they've expanded it somewhat and the surroundings are just very warm and give a, lend a feeling of safety for children. very warm and give a, lend a feeling of safety for children. On the, this Sunday, the Duffy House, who did a documentary last year, they were able to be part of Visionaries series, that is a PBS production. And Bill Mosher of Falmouth, I believe, is one of their directors and producers. And he goes around the country looking for people who are doing innovative steps and helping their fellow man. They focused in on Duffy and did a great, little documentary that was aired this past Sunday at 5:00 on PBS, so I'm sure they will repeat that somewhere in the cycle of this week. It has been shown across the country, it is here in the East Coast region now. Excuse me, and it does talk about the collaborative efforts of the Main Street Initiative. It discussed their Home First Initiative, which was one of the first in the nation providing shelter to people, even if they're not totally clean, but they're on that way. But the sheltering and the housing comes with intense case management, because we can all know, even if you become sober and you obtain housing, if things start to slip away, it's an easy step backwards that you can take. So it's the constant case management. And those of us who are in human service do know that case management is a key to help people to stay straight until they can really have their legs underneath them. So it was a wonderful documentary. I have to say, I was one of the stars of that documentary, so that's why I'm always invited. Not that I have anything else to say.
You sound like Bill.
As was Beth Albert, who was the most eloquent of the two, I would say. No, she's not here. So that was, you know, that's always fun. But the real stars are the people who do the work, and it's those, Tom Naples and the police officers and the community at large, who has really rallied around and tried to work together on this, especially in the Main Street area of Hyannis. So with that, I also just wanted to mention that on our, sort of the county administrators' report, there is a line here that says, "The Water Protection Collaborative has presented its draft MEP peer review framework to each of the boards of selectmen." There is much talk across the Cape that we all know that we have a wastewater issue, we all know that it's going to be tremendously expensive, we all know that the onus is put on the backs of the towns, which make them see all of the above until the price tag comes and, "Do we have to do this by ourselves?" And many people will use the questioning of the science of the MEP reports as to a reason not to move forward and that these have to be redone. And quite frankly, there's a lot of debate on that, but we recognize that there is a question. So the county has stepped up and is putting money towards a symposium or a conference, so to speak, of gathering experts, independent experts from around the country to come here, spend several days of really reviewing this material, and then having a conference of sorts that would be open to the public to give their report as to what they see is correct about the MEPs and what may be lacking. This is all something that we're all looking, there might be something that we assume is there and is not there. However, there is a, there are groups that feel that our review would not be credible enough, and they are asking for people to look for the National Academy of Sciences, particularly in Orleans. This was put out. I do know that Congressman Keating's office met with that group in Orleans, and I believe a couple of select persons, selectmen, from the town of Orleans, to discuss the possibilities of gathering funding. We stated that we would get this all together in the event, the deadline is July, if no money can be found, because the NAS study will cost about $650,000 to redo information that may be done. So anyway, we are offering to do it. If they find the money and NAS does it, so be it. It will take a little bit longer and push the subject forward down the road, but I think that as long as the public is satisfied, we need to have that to go forward. So that's the only, those are all my updates.
I want to say how delighted I was that you actually were the star of that, because my wife told me that if I didn't take her out to dinner on Sunday, I'd be in big trouble. So I'm glad you filled in and did a wonderful job.
Well, just one. I mean, I was, we were in the film, they put us in that documentary.
I watched it.
Oh, thank you!
You're welcome. You told me to watch it.
Yeah, I did.
And actually, you mentioned that's a key component, one of the homelessness coordination is a key component of Beth's budget submission for next year. There, I think, there are six major items in that professional and technical services, and that's one of the key components.
And that is one of the key. And Duffy is a major player in our regional network to hopefully end or at least prevent homelessness. And they are really a terrific group to work with, because they get the big picture, and they don't make it always all about them. They are very collaborative in their work, so I, it's a pleasure to speak well of them.
And I did give you, back to the MEP, I gave you the transmittal letter that went to all the boards of selectmen. As well as the draft framework, that's a draft for public comment, and they are holding two kind of community forums, public forums on this to accept comment. One is at Mashpee Town Hall on April 25th at 3:00 PM, and the other is at Brewster Town Hall on April 26th at 4:00 PM. So that's in that letter.
And I encourage the public to kind of be aware of this, those hearings, and to go on the website and look at that proposed structure of a review, and if they can attend to send their comments, and they're greatly appreciated.
And if they don't show up, we're going to charge them for it anyway, right?
Well, they'll be, it's one way or the other, we're trying to make it the least, you know, our wastewater issues are huge, and if we can manage to have the least amount beyond the backs of our taxpayers, that is the goal.
But the most important thing is for them to show up.
The most important thing is for everyone to show up.
Because it helps if they show up at the beginning rather than at the end.
Yes, it does.
Pat?
Well, just to comment on the Visionaries, I did watch the program Sunday, and it was really very well done. Bill Mosher has been doing this for almost 20 years now, all around the world. So I'm sure, I've seen his programs from Africa and, you know, other, some undeveloped nations, developed nations. But he does go all around the world and highlight certain projects in various areas that are very meaningful. And I think the real thrust of the Duffy program was the fact that all of the agencies on the Cape that have been involved in trying to help the homeless realize that the only way to do it was to integrate all of their efforts and join together and collaborate to make it happen. And also, they had the mantra of housing first. If someone doesn't have a place to live, then trying to do everything else, it doesn't really work that well. And that Housing First project took off from there. So I thought it was really very well done and really brought out how the changes are occurring and how people who have those needs are being addressed. So that was good. On Saturday, I attended the three-hour Eco Toilet Summit.
Oh, I read all of that.
In East Falmouth.
Yes.
There were about four or five manufacturers there that brought their products with them. They were compost toilets and urine diversion toilets and other kinds of toilets.
Did you meet Patrick?
It was called Toilet Talk.
Yes, he was the master of ceremony.
So I think when, in Falmouth, we sort of started the term sewer social. So now we have the term toilet talk. So now we're talking...
Need to ask what's next.
So I know.
No, please, let's not go any further down.
I mean, this is the reality of the time, because a lot of the people were looking at the price tag on the sewers and saying, you know, has to be, there's a gentleman who calls me occasionally, maybe once a month or so, to get an update on, you know, certain issues. And so the last one was sewers and toilets. But really, it's, the thing about it, though, is that they don't truly take care of all the nitrogen, because you still have showers and, you know, sinks and dishwashers and washing machines and all that that still put water into the septic system. So it doesn't deal with everything, but it does do something. The big question is, how do you really monitor? If you're trying to monitor the amount of nitrogen in an estuary or the reduction of nitrogen in an estuary, how do you really know if people have installed compost toilets, whether or not that's what's contributing or contributing to the decrease or not? But it was very well attended. There were about 150 people there. There was a good article in the Cape Cod Times about it. So it was very well attended, because, as I say, people are very concerned about the cost. And so they're looking for ways that they can help solve the problem and also help reduce the cost as well. Also, last week, I attended the Upper Cape Transfer Station Board of Managers meeting, and Tom Care was the invited guest.
Enterprise.
Right. And really, what it comes down to is this whole idea of solid waste. The disposal of solid waste is hugely expensive, and it's going to get more so. The towns that have contracts with CMAS, where I think they're about $35 to $38 a ton, now those contracts, Patty, she knows about the nitrogen. Those contracts are going to expire in 2015, and the cost of taking care of solid waste or disposing of solid waste is going to be a huge cost and a huge problem. But it's interesting that the, there were some people there who really support the idea of rail. I know Yarmouth, in their solid waste contract, has a requirement that their trash be removed by rail, it cannot be trucked from Yarmouth to the transfer station. So that's a good thing. But this is an issue that has not yet been resolved, but it's definitely on the high priority list, and it is for the Cape Cod Commission. Patty, as the Deputy Director of the Cape Cod Commission, has organized an Upper Cape, or no, a town-wide, a Cape-wide, 15 towns, 14 towns, not four, because they have their own, working together to try to come up with a Cape plan to reduce the costs of disposing of solid waste. So that is still in the works, but there's a way to go. And the other thing I wanted to mention, too, was the great work that Beth Albert is doing in human services with the suicide prevention issues on the Cape. I mean, some of you know that that was a huge issue in Barnstable just a couple of years ago, and now it's a major issue in Falmouth, where Falmouth had nine, not 10, 10 suicide completions last year. And they have worked together with a suicide prevention coalition and have put together some really great outreach efforts that are beginning to work. And there's another one coming up April 12th, because it's, we found, at least in Falmouth, in terms of the data from last year, that most of the suicides were white men between the ages of 40 and 55. So that's, and usually, the main reasons are financial issues, breakups in relationships, or substance abuse of some form. So targeting those areas has been extremely important, and the State Department of Mental Health has been involved, has done some extraordinary outreach into businesses where a lot of men are employed, like lumberyards and steamship authority and other businesses as well. Done some training with bartenders in terms of recognizing sometimes when people come in and start to drink and listen and try to pick up clues. So it's been, it's been a town-wide effort this past year, and hopefully will be very successful. So those are my activities in a week, Mr. Pierre.
Very busy. Just to segue on the suicide prevention, one of the issues that is of growing concern are the veterans that are returning from overseas and the increase in that population of suicide completions. I know that I've spoken to Beth earlier about expanding the 2-1-1 service that we have, because the issue seems more to make the significant others and spouses and their families aware of how to contact the Veterans Administration to get those support services in place. Because what we found with this particular population of veterans is they're not expressing suicide ideation, and they are not reaching out for help. So it's very important that we do everything that we can to make those people that are, care about them, you know, in connection and in touch with it. And we're seeing some progress with that. The, on, you mentioned the railroad, and one of the issues for us on the railroad is connected to the vegetative management issue and the fact that we had gotten some cooperation from NSTAR, but not from the rail service. And that we did a program, had Scott Michaud come over to do a program, to put that PowerPoint that we all saw into a place where we could, when we edit it and put it together, we can put it on the website and archive it, so that we can, you know, have people have access to what the Cape Cod Commission is trying to do to manage this problem and hopefully get it to a point where we, you know, we get it down to a, you know, very diminutive kind of issue. I did go to the Meals on Wheels volunteer thing today, and that was great fun for me, especially when I was talking to the woman that was 101 years old at her own house about issues that were of concern to her. And believe it or not, problems came up, because people are concerned, you know, at all ages about, well, what are we doing in order to protect generations yet unborn, about protecting this wonderful place that we have in Cape Cod? So I had, I learned a lot, and I had great fun doing it, and I'm glad that I did have the opportunity to participate. And with that, I guess that, Mark, you really...
I do have a couple of things. We have a couple of minutes left. So on my weekly report, I just wanted to mention that the Coastal Resources Committee will be meeting on Wednesday, March 30th, from 2:00 PM to 4:30 PM in the Cape Cod Commission Conference Room. And their topic will be an update on the Cape Cod Water Resources Restoration Project, you know, the Don Liptek Project. So they'll be talking about that. Also, under the heading of the Cape Cod Commission, the Draft 2008 Cape Cod Surface Water Quality Assessment Report has been posted on the DEP website, and that's under www.mass.gov/dep, and you can find it under that heading. And this is a report summarizing the information on Cape Cod water quality, surface water quality, since the last assessment report was published in 2002. And it's up on the web as a draft, during which time the public can comment or make suggestions to the report. And comments are due to DEP by Wednesday, April 6th. Excuse me, Commissioner Lyons mentioned the Water Protection Collaborative and the Draft MEP Peer Review Framework, so I'm going to go into that. And also, the town of Brewster has invited you to join them in a celebration of the restoration of the Stony Brook Salt Marsh, and that's taking place on Monday, April 25th, 2011, at 1:00. And that's going to take place at the Cape Cod Museum of Natural History on Route 6A in Brewster.
Well, I happened to notice in the audience, we have Charlie Sumner as well.
And we do have some Brewster officials here today. Just if I might, Bill, I have two...
It'll be great fun.
It will be great fun, yeah. Today, you mean?
April 25th.
April 25th.
April 25th.
The public is invited, right, Charlie?
Two other things, if I might. Remember, a few weeks back, we talked about the Verizon Business Reward gift cards that are earned through the AmeriCorps program and their participation in Verizon. I have seven cards that I would like you to vote to approve the use of for the benefit of the AmeriCorps program and the AmeriCorps members. And as, just to remind you, there are four Target gift cards, each worth $50, and three ExxonMobil, each worth $50. So they'll use those to buy gas, obviously, for their van and supplies for the members.
I will move that. Actually...
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing done, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, any extensions? Thank you.
Thank you. And I have a request to approve the out-of-state travel for Andrew Gottlieb. He is going to attend the New England, let's see here, New England Water Environment Association Congressional Briefing to take place in Washington, DC on April 5th.
Is there a motion?
Yes, I have a motion. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing done, all is in favor?
Aye.
All are pulled, any extensions? Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Is it possible to get a couple more chairs, do you think?
Yeah, I will do that right away. Yep. During this pause, will we take a take? Just mention...
Yes. Okay. Oh yeah, one more thing.
No, I'm just going to mention to Bill that typically, when you're taking the comments, it's customary to do public officials first, just so you remember. Okay.
Can we take a break for take change?
So five more, five-minute break to get some chairs in here?
Okay, and take change. Great.